And welcome to the May 19th, 2025 Board Meeting. If we could pause for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say thank you for joining us this evening and certainly thank you to Dr. Leach and his staff for opening up the doors to Crestwood High School for us to be here this evening. This meeting is held in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. The news media has been notified and a copy of the agenda has been made available to the public. This meeting is open to the public and the public is welcome to attend in person. All persons wishing to attend the meeting by virtual means may do so via YouTube Sumter School District Board Meetings and Sumter School District's Facebook page. Vision: Sumter School District is committed to educating, empowering, and enriching the lives of all students to reach their full potential. Mission: Sumter School District is committed to providing a safe, nurturing, and high-quality educational environment that supports diversity and equips students for local and global success. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we have the following board members here with us. Yours truly, Sean Reagan, Area 5 Chairman. Mr. Brian Austin, Area 1 Vice Chair. Dr. Gloria Lee, Area 7 Clerk. Ms. Brittany English, Area 2, who's not with us at the moment. Dr. Ralph W. Canty Senior, Area 3. Ms. Tara Johnson, Area 4. Mr. Matthew McCloud, Area 6. Phil Lavenice, Area 8. Bonnie Disney, Area 9. And Deborah McQueen, our Shaw Air Force Base representative. We also have joining us tonight our Superintendent, Dr. William Wright, and our Administrative Assistant and Manager, Ms. Shante Scott. I do like to acknowledge a few of the executive team members that are in the audience tonight as well. Again, welcome to the May 19th Board of Trustees Meeting. This meeting is now called to order. We're now move to Item 2, 2.1, Approval of the Agenda. Upon consensus without any objections...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to be recognized for a moment, please.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion that we add to the agenda under Item 6, Executive Session, Discussion of Personnel Conflicts of Interest.
Mr. Chair, I second that.
Alright, there's been a motion and a second for the purpose of amending the agenda for discussion in executive session as it relates to a personnel matter in terms of a conflict of interest. Any discussion? Hearing none, we may vote at this time. We can do it by a show of...
Show of hands if we want.
All in favor of amending the agenda, you may do so by raising of the hands at this time. Alright, that's four. All in favor, I mean all opposed at this time with a show of hands? Alright, motion fails at this time.
The Chairman, was that four to four?
Yes, the motion fails. Item number three, Special Recognition. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Superintendent and you can lead us from there.
Mr. Chairman Members of the Board, we have several students that are going to be recognized tonight and we are grateful to have the opportunity to do so at this time. At the commencement of the school year, we are excited to be able to present several students tonight and according to the... According to what I'm seeing in front of me, we've got Crestwood High School AFJRTC that is first. And so, we are ready for that presentation at this time to the Board.
To Dr. Wright and to the Board, I'd like to present to you the Crestwood Drill Team competed in the State Drill Meet and we won first place overall, so you have part of your district, the first place, the number one drill team in the state of South Carolina, Crestwood, SCA 73rd.
They're gonna... We'll ask the students to come around on the stage, shake each board member's hand, and then we'll get a collective picture at that point. Yeah, just stand right in front. I think we best... I think that's the best. Let's give them another round of applause, please. At this time, we'll move to Item 3.2, which is Seal of Bilinguality and Dr. Jada McCloud will introduce and talk a little bit about these students that are going to be recognized next.
Good evening. At this time, I'm Ms. Dr. Emily Kimpton. She coordinates Secondary English Language Arts as well as World Languages to give an overview and then she will have the assistance of teachers from the high schools to acknowledge the Seals of Bilinguality.
We have Dr. Diego Tieten here today from Sumter High School. He's been helping me coordinate the Seal of Bilinguality. He's also serving as the President of our Association for Foreign Language Teachers in South Carolina, so I'm gonna let him talk about the seal.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. The Seal of Bilinguality is a recognition for those students who take a test and they are officially recognized for their bilingual skills and work skills in another language other than English. So, it's my pleasure to work with a wonderful team at the Sumter School District along with Dr. Silva and Mrs. Noyoka McDonald. So, for Sumter High School, I would like to recognize Nicholas Woods, who achieved the Bronze Seal in French. Ashley Albiater Hernandez, who achieved Silver in Spanish. Yareni Campos Gallardo, who achieved Silver in Spanish. Anel Diaz Perez, who achieved Silver in Spanish. And Alfredo Gutierrez, who achieved Bronze in Spanish.
Good evening, everybody. Now it's time to recognize a student from Crestwood High School. Natasha Aguilar Martinez, who got Silver for Spanish. Kathy Cruz Marquez, who got Silver for Spanish. David Martinez Castillo, who got Bronze for Spanish. Jennifer McDougall, who got Gold for Spanish. Gustavo Ornelas, Silver for Spanish. Elvis Perez, who got Bronze for Spanish. Jack Sanchez, who got Silver for Spanish. Alexander Santiago Martinez, who got Silver for Spanish. And Allison Torres Gonzalez, who got Silver for Spanish.
Hello, everyone. We have three students from Lakewood High who will be recognized for getting their Seal of Bilinguality today. First, we have Jansen Barona, who got Bronze in Spanish. Next, we have Abner Motica, who is unable to be here, but his mom will be here for him. And Abner received Silver for Swahili. We also have Maria Reyes Quiroino, who got Silver in Spanish as well. Thank you.
Our third set of students tonight on Item 3.3 are students who are perfect scorers. Let me say that again for the news and everybody else. These students are perfect scorers.
Our first recognition is going to be for the South Carolina Ready Assessment, which is for grades 3 through 8 in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and grade 4 and 6 also have the SC Ready Science Assessment. So, at this time, we're going to acknowledge those and I will also acknowledge my new Director of Elementary Education, Ms. Jamise Black, that is here to assist us.
If there is a principal or designated from Alice Drive Elementary, please come forward. Holt Mims, Math. Summer Oliver, Math. And that was Hillcrest Middle School. Trinity Holt. Kingsbury Elementary. Camelia Dwyer, Millwood Elementary. Cecilia Gianni, Millwood, Hillcrest Elementary. Am Patel, High Hill, Math. Cameron Sanders, Math, High Hill. Nolan San Esteban Rupert, High Hill. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a round of applause again. At this time, we will ask the Administrator from Crestwood High School to please come forward. June Bennett. U.S. History. Clinton Clark. Algebra 1 and Biology. Danica Dempsey. Biology and U.S. History. Olivia Gaines. English 2. Anthony Kiggins. Algebra, Biology. Alina Mack. Biology. Kalen McDonald. Biology, History. Jennifer McDougall. Biology. Peyton McCloud. Biology. Aubrey Rackster. History. Kenzie Reed. History. Hanaya Robinson. Biology. Alejandro Santiago Martinez. English 2, History. Tenlee Shadoen. English. English. De Erica Tucson. English. Melaina Wilber. English. Amira Wright. Biology. Gabranasia Wright. History. Let's give these Crestwood ladies and gentlemen a hand of applause. Let's give these ladies and gentlemen another round of applause. At this time, can we have the leadership from Lakewood and/or a designated to come forward? Angel Black. History. Natasha Boykin. Biology and History. Nastaja, thank you, Boykin. Douglas Bowie. Biology. Darius Cash. History. Rayquan Coakley. History. Kenyon Cooper. Biology. Hannah Gibbs. English. Summer Green. History. Jaden Howard. Biology and History. Amber Knight. English. Zenadia Solomon. History. Ayana Wells. History. Sammy Amasada. History. And lastly, for our Gators, Tyler Washington Broomfield. History. Let's give our ladies and gentlemen, again, from Lakewood, a round of applause. And as they take their pictures, ladies and gentlemen, we want to say thank you for bearing with us. As you can see, we have numerous awards to give this evening. So as we go through them, we thank you for your patience and support at this time. Ms. Sandor has joined us already. Caleb Adams. Biology, History. Sammy Amasada. History. Naija Bethu. History. Mures Ben Mohammed Harif. Algebra, Biology and English. Kane Bowen. English. Melanie Call. English. Haley Carlson. English. Caleb Conway. Algebra, Biology. Rocco Diggs. Biology. Silas Edge. English. Lloydana Fagan. History. Jada Felder. Algebra. Elizabeth Flynn. English. Noah Grossman. Algebra. William Guthrie. Biology and English. Savannah Hatfield. Algebra. Kalen Johnson. English. Andrew Jowers. History. Bianca Kelson. Biology. Deshaun Jones. English. Alexander Cravetto. English. Jared Logan. Biology. Diane Alexis Lidko. History. Andrew Miller. Biology. Ms. Sandor, help me with this one, okay? Christina Masnaguta. Masnaguta. Biology. Maxim Masnaguta. Algebra and Biology. Bria Nelson. History. Olivia Newman. Algebra. Syria Patel. English. Honesty Robinson. Algebra. Joseph Santiago. Algebra. Kenan Snyder. English. Angelique Taylor. English. Nora Untersier. English. David Viskara. Biology. English. Corbin Weatherwax. Biology. Jayla Wells. English. Peyton Williamson. English. And our last Gamecock, Skylar Wilson. English. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give these young ladies and gentlemen another round of applause. For a job well done.
While the Gamecocks are organizing for their photo op, I would just wanted to say thank you once again. As you noted, we have many, many Sumter School District shining stars. This is not easy to achieve. These students have worked hard. They've had support with their families, with their schools, their teachers. And we wanted to make sure that they were acknowledged for this work. Scoring a hundred or a hundred percent is not an easy feat, and not many students rise to this level. So as you can see, we have many young people to be very proud of. And at this time, at this time, we'll turn over the board meeting back over to the Superintendent Dr. Wright, while these young ladies and gentlemen... Dr. Wright, while these young ladies and gentlemen exit the stage. Some are actually exiting the building because they still have ballgames and other awards ceremonies that they are headed to. But we appreciate them being here and we appreciate your time and the board's time to recognize these accomplishments.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I realize that this took us a little while tonight, but we're so happy and excited to be able to celebrate the success of these students. Let's give them another round of applause as they're excellent.
Certainly, we will proceed with our board meeting at this time, but again, we will echo as a board collectively, as the administration and our superintendent has already done, how proud we are of each and every student that graced this stage on this afternoon. Want to say thank you and job well done and keep up the great work. At this time, we'll move to item number four, 4.1, announcements.
Mr. Chair. I would just like to give a special shout out to Mr. English and the Crestwood, I'm sorry, the Lakewood and Sumter High Alumni for putting together a great alumni game on Saturday. Congratulations to the Lady Gamecocks and the Male Gamecocks for their wins on Saturday against Lakewood. I look forward to the next event. I was pleasantly surprised at halftime I was recognized for being in support of the alumni with their, now their regularly occurring alumni games. So just wanted to give recognition to them for their efforts of bringing our community together. Thank you to the Sumter community as well for supporting our alumni of our schools as well. Thank you.
Yes. I would like to recognize Lakewood and Crestwood for outstanding class day. Both days were extremely great and they had some wonderful presentation to the students that were announced for having over a million dollar scholarships. And I just want to say congratulations to both Lakewood and Crestwood.
All right, thank you, Dr. Lee. Any further announcements at this time?
Dr. Reagan?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to again congratulate the eighth grade class at R.E. Davis Preparatory Academy and the first grade class at Lemire. I served as the speaker for both promotion ceremonies and again, congratulations to those students as they move on to their next grades.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Hearing none, 4.2, committee reports and recommendations. Do we have any?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm happy to report that the superintendent has provided the master plan committee with an extremely powerful document. Timely, visionary, informative, and I anticipate that it will guide our course in the coming days and months as we move toward the development of a widespread scooping master plan to push this district forward. May I take this moment to personally thank the superintendent for the report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Candy. Any other committee reports at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to say that the facilities committee, we are trying to fit a date in with all the graduations and all the events going on at the end of the year. As soon as we have a date finalized, I will let the board know.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. Any other committee reports at this time? Hearing none, we're now down to item number five, the superintendent's report, Dr. William Wright. I will now turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first one is our, thank you, Fine Arts Strategic Plan for 2025 that will be presented by Ms. Heather Clemens at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chairman, Dr. Reagan, Superintendent Dr. Wright, and Sumter School District Board of Trustee members. I come to you this evening in hopes of your approval of the Sumter School District Arts Strategic Plan. As I know you are aware, a strong strategic plan provides organizations with a clear roadmap to align goals, optimize resources, and proactively navigate challenges, ensuring cohesive progress toward long-term success. With your approval, this plan is set to go into effect July 1st of this year, and we anticipate its sunsetting June 30th of 2029. At this time, I'd like to share the whys behind the creation of this plan. In 2023, 2024, Sumter School District was awarded an Arts Coordinator Grant through the South Carolina Arts Commission to provide funding to support the establishment of a full-time fine arts coordinator position. The grant requires a three-year commitment to be rolled out in three phases. Last year was Phase One, Year One, where we established, or Sumter School District established, leadership and oversight by creating a full-time fine arts coordinator position. We are now in Year Two, Phase Two, where we were to develop a district-wide arts strategic plan and secure board approval of the plan. And next year, in Year Three, Phase Three, we are to implement the approved strategic plan. This phased approach is meant to strengthen arts education and provide a sustainable framework for growth in the visual and performing arts in our district. A strategic arts plan is essential for a school district to ensure equitable access to high-quality arts education, align arts initiatives with educational goals, and foster student development through structured forward-thinking programs. At this time, I'd like to provide you with a few justification statements for the need of an arts strategic plan in Sumter School District. I think you'll find by reviewing the plan that this plan reflects Sumter School District's strong commitment to the arts education as an essential nurturing divert, as essential for nurturing diverse learners in our district. This plan will support the empowerment of all students to reach their full potential through equitable access to the arts. It's my hope that this plan helps us to prioritize high-quality instruction, dynamic programming, enriching opportunities, and meaningful exposures in the arts. This plan will help us align with and support student success as outlined in the profile of a South Carolina graduate, ensuring college and career readiness of our students. And this plan positions the district to become eligible for additional grant funding to sustain and grow arts education initiatives over time in our district. So in October of this school year, a diverse committee of stakeholders to Sumter School District began meeting monthly to develop this comprehensive strategic plan. This collaborative group included fine arts teachers at various levels that teach various arts domains, parents of current and former Sumter School District arts students, a community partner invested in the arts, and district administrators. Working together, we were able to create a shared vision and actionable goals for advancing arts education in our district, and I'd like to briefly share those goals with you now. Next slide, please. So the team came up with a set of belief statements that encompass the arts education in our district. In Sumter School District, we believe the arts can have a profound positive impact on a student's life. We believe a comprehensive public arts education is a right. We believe all students deserve the opportunity to participate in high-quality arts education programs of their choice. We believe students deserve equitable access to artistic educational opportunities, and we believe students must have highly qualified and caring arts teachers and administrators. Next slide, please. The team came up with a mission and vision statements, again encompassing the arts in our district. I think you'll see that these mission and vision statements align closely with the mission and vision statements in our district. So our mission is the Sumter School District Fine Arts Department strives to provide superior standards-based arts instruction to all students. It is our aim to foster creativity, self-expression, and enriching arts opportunities that ensure high-quality equitable arts experiences that coincide with academic achievement in order to promote in our students a lifelong appreciation of the arts. And our vision is to create, shape, and innovate a thriving and inclusive arts community where each student is empowered to explore their maximum individual potential in the arts. We envision a diverse arts community that is celebrated and essential to students' academic growth, innovative thinking, and more importantly, global citizenship. By providing resources, opportunities, and support to shape artistic expression, we aspire to motivate students to embrace the transformative power of the arts. Through the arts, we seek to encourage a future where creativity is at the heart of education and self-expression, building a more compassionate, well-connected, and vibrant world. So prior to the creation of the four strategic plan goals that accompany this plan, various needs assessment and opportunities to learn surveys were offered to both fine arts and content area teachers for input. From those survey results, the team was able to determine various assets within Sumter School District's Fine Arts Department while also identifying key areas of need. Next slide, please. Here you will see five statements that summarize our key areas of need. Those needs are to strengthen arts instruction by addressing teacher vacancies, retaining certified teachers, and providing ongoing professional development; ensure program sustainability by funding essential supplies, instruments, and performance equipment while streamlining purchasing and approval processes; improve student access and progression through better scheduling practices and strengthened transitions between elementary, middle, and high school arts programs; enhance learning environments by upgrading and maintaining arts facilities, classrooms, and performance spaces; and lastly, boost engagement and support by increasing parental involvement and building partnerships with community organizations. These key areas of need are what assisted the team in establishing the backbone for the strategic plan's goals created. I will share those four goals with you now with a summary of a few of the action steps we hope to achieve with these goals by the end of the life of the plan, which again would be June 30th, 2029. Our first goal would be by July 1st of 2029, develop and implement a comprehensive, standards-aligned arts curriculum across all grade levels that integrates interdisciplinary connections, includes culturally responsive practices, and incorporates assessments to measure student growth in the arts. And some of our action steps to achieve this goal would be to implement performance-based scheduling, ensure effective arts curriculum models are utilized at all levels, and provide professional learning opportunities and curriculum and best practices in scheduling as relates to the arts. Our second goal, by June 30th, 2029, upgrade and expand fine arts facilities and materials in all district schools comparable to districts of our stature, both state and national, ensuring equitable access to high-quality resources for all students. Our action steps for this particular goal would be to complete a comprehensive needs assessment to identify gaps in facilities, materials, and equipment, secure annual fine arts funding, and upgrade and renovate art spaces as needed. Our third goal would be by the end of the plan to establish a comprehensive professional development program for arts educators and students that fosters continuous growth, aligns with state and national standards, and enhances instructional practices. And we hope to achieve this goal by offering targeted professional development for fine arts educators, provide our arts students with opportunities to experience the arts through field study and outreach programs, and foster leadership skills and opportunities amongst our arts educators. And lastly, by June 30th, 2029, we hope to establish a comprehensive and equitable arts education program across all district schools, ensuring robust arts integration, high-quality access, and diverse opportunities for all students and staff. And to achieve this last goal, we will develop and implement an arts integration framework, ensure equitable access to the arts in all of our schools, expand arts courses and offerings and opportunities to all students in all areas of studies. So this is just a simplified version of the Fine Arts Strategic Plan that I bring to you this evening. Thank you for your time, and are there any questions?
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Any questions from the board at this time? Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, but I'd like to praise you for, for all of you who put your work into this. This is needed, and I'm very happy to say that it looks like it's going to be a very fine program for all of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Disney.
All right, any further questions or comments at this time? Again, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're ready for item 5.2, General Fund Balance, and that will be presented by Mrs. Shatika Spearman, our CFO.
Good evening. I am here to honor a request to discuss the general fund balance and what it is from an accounting perspective. You know that this is a sort of controversial topic as to what it is, and so I'll just present some basic facts on what it is. present some basic facts on what it is and what you as a board member, what you need to see and what's important for you that I believe that should be of importance to you. First, I did pass out a short quiz, but we're going to do it together, and no one will be singled out, so don't worry. Remove all anxiety. First, we want to say that fund balance and cash flow are two different things, okay? When budgets and financial performance are evaluated, fund balances and changes in that fund balance are scrutinized. But we, as a department in Sumter School District Finance Department, must be concerned with fund balance, but as well and just as important, we must be concerned with cash flow. It has to do with cash flow, but it is not 100% cash. And so one thing that I was thinking about before this presentation was, if fund balance was cash, then we would have the first dollar that we made since 2011 sitting in a bank account. But we do not. That first dollar has been spent, and so fund balance, we'll discuss what that is and how it differs from cash flow. A district's cash flow and the fund balance reported on its financial statements reflect two different metrics for a specified period of time. That's an important sentence. Cash flow represents the ability of an organization to pay the obligations on time, while fund balance is a sign of overall financial stability and health. For most people, a relatable comparison would be managing your current bank balance while paying monthly bills compared to evaluating your overall net worth. Fund balance has more to do with net worth than what you have in a banking account for a balance. One is short-term. The cash flow analysis is a short-term evaluation. Fund balance is a long-term evaluation. The amount in a district's fund balance doesn't mean that district has that much cash on hand. One of the most important concepts for the public to understand is that a district's fund balance is the difference between a district's assets and the liabilities and the changes to the fund balance, which are represented by the difference in the revenue and expenditures. So what I've said is a very lengthy sentence because assets and liabilities are on what we relate to as a balance sheet, correct? It has all of our assets and our liabilities. Our revenue and expenditures is like an income statement. It shows the revenue we made and the expenditures that we paid. But the difference between those revenue and expenditures is an added effect to the balance sheet, so they talk. And so that helps us determine what fund balance is at the end of the day. As you have also noticed or heard, that there are types of fund balance classifications that we have, and I'll show you those on our financial statements. There are five types of categories of fund balance. The non-spendable balances, which are not expendable or are legally or contractually required to be maintained and intact. We have a restricted balance that can be spent only for a specified purpose. A committed balance includes amounts that can be used only for the specific purposes determined by a formal action of the government, which would be you in this case at the school district level. Anything that you have committed a fund balance to be done for an action. And for FY '25, you should see that that $3 million that we designated for fund balance on last year's, on this year's budget will now show an amount on the committed balance for fund balance. We will finally have an amount on that line where we haven't before. Assigned balances are amounts intended to be used for government for special purposes but which do not meet the criteria for the others, and then the unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance is the residual classification for the government's general fund, and that is where this district has kept most of its fund balance in unassigned. If I go back to assigned balances, we do have an amount for assigned balances. It's generally food service because it's self-sufficient, so we can't mix that in with the general fund, so that is an assigned balance. So for FY '24, we have two types of fund balances, the assigned and unassigned. But for FY '25, for the first time, we're going to have three different categories of fund balance. That would be committed, assigned, and unassigned. Effective cash flow management is critical to maintaining continuity of operations. Even if you have a strong fund balance, if cash flows are not managed well, a district may not have the cash on hand to be able to make payroll or pay bills. The inflows of our property taxes from the county office occurs at different rates from year to year, and that amount of revenue can be estimated using information from our property tax. So a large portion of our district cash flows for like payroll and benefits can be estimated for that as well. And so when you have a large amount of our money coming from the property tax, that flow, cash flow, affects your fund balance. As you know, for this district, near the end of our fiscal year, right now, is where we get most of our money, so that affects our cash flow. We have to have strong cash, and a fund balance will reflect that when we start a fiscal year. We've done that ever since I've been here, that we've had to have a strong ending balance because we know when we start the new year, the revenue is not coming in. And now that we've made the statement, I've made the statement, that revenue and expenditures affects fund balance, we need to make sure we have a strong start to the year. The decisions that are made by you as our board affect the timing and amount of revenues and expenditures, and they have an impact on fund balance, which is what I just stated. Cash flows have an impact on cash balance. Cash flows has an impact on fund balance, but cash flow is not fund balance. The decisions made about how to use the cash are critical to the changes in fund balance. The last part is, understanding that fund balances do not directly reflect the cash on hand is critical to ensure that there are funds available when they're needed for the day-to-day operations. So every day that I come into work and my staff, we have someone designated to evaluate cash. We have a cash management accountant who sits there and gives us daily, even weekly, reports on what our cash levels are. We look at what our accounts payable and what our payrolls are, and we compare that to make sure that we're covered. Since I've been here, I've not had a concern about covering that, thankfully, because we are maximizing our cash by monitoring it in the LGIP, where we put a lot of our cash into that local government investment pool, and you see the results of that from the interest that we get. And so we're always maximizing our cash, almost like an in-house investment process, where we're maximizing our cash. And so that intersection of cash flow and fund balance is critical to understand because one has to do with our net value and the other has to do with our cash flow today on us covering our bills. So if we can pull out our textbooks, I mean, our financial statements, if we would turn to the first document in our financial statements, and that would be starting on page I, which lists our Board of Trustees. I wanted to show you some highlights of what is in this report because I know if I were you, maybe I didn't really look at this report in detail to know what is in there. But on section I, it will list the board members and the district they represent. For FY '25, your names will appear in this section. Behind you, we will now list the administrative team and their positions. They will be listed for the current administrative team, and that's on page II. The next section is page one. This is the independent auditor's report. This is what I, as a board member, would be concerned about. That second paragraph, which starts with the phrase, "In our opinion," that says that the accompanying financial statements referred to above presently present fairly in all material respects the financial position. That is what you want to see when you open up your audit report. That second paragraph, that's saying, the auditors are saying that we are in compliance for what they have checked and that it is presented fairly, the amounts that we are giving to them, because these financial statements become our responsibility, not the auditor. The next page that's important to you would be on page five, which is bullet under Financial Highlights, bullet number three. At the end of the current fiscal year, the unassigned fund balance for the general fund was approximately XXX. In this case, it was 59.6. That's where we left off last year with a fund balance of 59.6. You are interested in that because, again, what does fund balance reflect? Our net worth as a district. The next page that a board member would be concerned about is on page 10. When they make the statement, in reviewing the fund balance of the school district, it may be useful to analyze the unassigned fund balance as of June 30th, and it gives the exact amount of that fund balance, $59,619,908. And it talks about what is legally required by the different organizations. South Carolina school districts are required by law to maintain a general reserve fund of at least one month. That's what the Code of Laws requires us. At June 30th, the minimum required fund balance would be 12.4, but we had 59.6, so we exceeded that. And also, the school district, they go and tell you and break that down to what that means. That means that we have four and eight-tenths months of unassigned fund balance when we're only required to have one. So that is important to note as well. So what is the best, so that means the remaining governmental funds with fund balance is the debt service, and so they go through the different funds to tell you what that fund balance is. The next page that a board member would be concerned about is 13. Do you know that they actually check to make sure that we have a budget process? They will make a report on that in our financial statements, and they will attribute to that process of whether we have good internal controls or not. So on page 13, under Fiscal Year Budgets, it describes our budget process, where we go through budget workshop sessions held in the spring, where we meet with each school, and we discuss in detail funding projections, which we have through our first reading. And it tells how much the overall budget increased from the budget from last year, 2024 to 2025, and if you recall, there was an $8.7 million increase for our budget. And it says the fund balance was used to balance the budget in the amount of 3.88. That's that number, $3,088,267. And then it describes what our process is, which is that the county council will approve. The next page that's important to you is on page 18, which shows our fund balance for FY '24. We began the year with a $51,402,592 fund balance at the beginning of fiscal year '24. Our net change or addition was $9,788,480. For FY '24, Sumter School District's ending general fund balance for FY 2024 was $61,191,072. That's an important number, and that is where we started this year with that fund balance. The next item that a board member would be concerned about is on page 107 of your financial statements. It talks about internal control. So that is just as important as having the right numbers on a balance sheet or your income statement sheet. It states that second paragraph, "In our opinion, the school district complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements." That is simply saying that the procedures that we submit to our auditors, we're actually following them. They actually test us up against what we say we do in processes. And they're saying that for what they checked, that we followed directions and that there were no violations or deficiencies, and how we handle our federal programs as well. But internal control is very, very important. And the last page that is very important to us, to you as a board member, is page 114. If you look at page 114, that is a summary of all of the opinions in a financial statement. That is the Schedule of Findings and Question Calls. This page has the description of what our opinion determination is, and as you can see, the type of report, the opinion, is unmodified. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion that you can get on a financial statement. And we received that for FY '24, we plan to receive it for FY '25, and we've received it since I've been here, and we've received it for a decade or more before I got here. So Sumter School District should be very proud that that opinion remains a staple and something that our leadership sees routinely. Also on this sheet, you will see their decision on internal controls. You want no's, that there were no weaknesses in internal controls, and you see the X's and the no's. Again, there were no concerns about that. On how we handle federal dollars, they will test those as well. There are no internal control weaknesses, and you want to see no with an X there. They even give an opinion on the federal program's compliance. Again, another unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. And the findings on page 115, non-reported. You want to see non-reported on that as well. And so that is a quick synopsis of how fund balance is important and what it is. It's also a synopsis of how it's reported in your financial statements, and with a strong fund balance, you can see the findings that surround it because it all works together to make sure that we're responsible stewards of your funds, of the public's funds. So let's refer back to this quiz to see if I covered everything. The first question is, true or false, a district's cash flow and fund balance reported on its financial statements reflect the same information for a specified period of time? Does anyone want to take a stab at that?
It's false.
That's right. It is false. That is because there are, they reflect two different metrics, not the same. Number two, which term represents the ability of an organization to pay the obligations on time? Is this a cash flow analysis or a fund balance analysis? It is a cash flow analysis. That's correct. Which term is a sign of overall financial stability and health? Is it a cash flow or a fund balance?
Fund balance.
It is a fund balance, yes.
That's why we have it.
Which term is a short-term view that includes actions such as managing your current bank balance while paying monthly bills? Is that a cash flow or a fund balance?
Cash flow.
That is a cash flow. Thank you. And which term is a long-term view that involves actions such as evaluating our net worth?
Fund balance.
Fund balance. Yes, it is. Question, the amount in a district's fund balance doesn't mean your district has that much cash on hand. True or false? Very true. Thank you very much. A district's fund balance is the difference between a district's assets and liabilities and the changes to that fund balance resulting from the difference between the revenues and expenditures. Is that true or false? It is true. Thank you very much. There are five categories of fund balance, and they are listed, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Is that true or false? It is true. Per Sumter School District's FY 2024 financial statements, the district has two types of fund balance classifications for the general fund. Is that true or false? It is true. It is true, yes indeed. For number 10, Sumter School District's ending general fund balance for FY 2024 was That was the 59, the 51 was the beginning one, and the 61 is the ending, and it becomes the beginning for FY 2025. Thank you very much. Number 11, A, what is the best opinion on a financial statement? Unmodified, thank you very much, that is correct. And lastly, did Sumter School District receive this opinion for FY 2024?
Yes.
Yes, we did. So I hope that I added some clarity to some degree of what fund balance is and how it differs from cash. I hope that you feel a little bit more comfortable about your financial statements because it is over 100 pages, and it will drive you to go to sleep if you read it every page to page. And so if this was helpful, I would love your feedback. But again, if you have any questions regarding this, I am here to serve. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Spearman, thank you for your lesson. And I certainly thank you for the assessment that went along with it.
Thank you.
A formative assessment. At this time, board members, do you have any questions at this time? Yes?
Ms. Spearman, on what page would we find the non-spendable balances, restricted, committed balances, assigned balances?
Okay.
Please?
That would be on page... One second, I have it noted. If we look on page 67, it is Note 16, Fund Balance Classifications.
Would you mind if I ask your question about page 104, which is Location Reconciliation? And I imagine the others know it, but I don't. Why are we still spending money on St. John's?
I'm sorry?
Why are we still spending money on St. John's? It shows 29,000.
I'm not understanding what you're saying. Spending money on...
It's a St. John's school.
St. John's school?
Out in the eastern part of the district. Was, I understand it was dated to someone else some years ago.
Well, this is as of 2024, June 30, 2024. So we were maintaining some levels there at that location.
We were doing.
But we're done with it now. That was from the period. This is a financial statement that I have.
I understand.
Covers July 1st, 2024.
But I didn't hear though, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear what Mr. Myers said.
Because this, these financial statements covered July 1st.
No, no, I heard that, but Mr. Myers said something that we had an obligation.
We're done with it now, because this is old. So yes, we did, we maintained some expenditures related to St. John's. Was it electricity and stuff like that? But we got that straight, because there was a problem with that, I think it was, and we fixed it.
When did we dispose of St. John's? I thought it was years ago.
But we had, we maintained the building. Electricity, right? Yes.
We gave it away, why do we maintain? Let me, let me ask you the questions after the meeting so that we don't have to bother everybody, but...
Okay.
And of course, I'll be asking about expenditures to Thomas Sumter and all those. I'll get with you if you don't mind and ask those questions. Because they are very specific.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes ma'am.
Absolutely.
I'll get with you next week.
No problem.
Or this way.
All right, any other questions at this time? And any other questions from any board members? All right?
I don't have a question. I just want to tell Ms. Spearman, thank you very much. Wasn't expecting to have any homework or classwork today, but I do appreciate it because you have answered a lot of my questions.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Again, any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none? Superintendent?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we'll move on to item 5.3, be done from the Office of Student Support Services led by Mrs. Veron Davis. And she has a staff member that will assist her.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Reagan, our Superintendent, Dr. Wright, other board members. Per your request, we have an update on our Behavioral and Mental Health Services from our Coordinator of Behavioral Health Services, Ms. Nikisha Keith.
Good evening. Mental health continues to affect academics' performance, attendance, and behaviors across our district. While we partner with community partners, in-house support staff are essential for consistent responsive care. This evening, I'd like to briefly discuss with you the current services that we have, highlight expanded supports, and share our Behavioral Health Department goals and supports we currently have for staff. Unfortunately, we have tragically lost nearly 15 students this school year due to suicide, from suicide, homicide, or others. One loss is too many. Just as we support physical and learning disability, mental health must be met with the same urgency. Currently, we've partnered with nine outside agencies to provide individual and group therapy, crisis intervention, behavior intervention, family support, and psychiatrist's care. All services are provided by skilled clinicians under supervision from their direct agencies. In addition, we also have social workers. At this time, we have three Title I social workers and three contract. These social workers also provide individual and group support, crisis intervention, behavior assessments, family engagement, collaboration with school teams, community resource connections, and home visits. We provide bi-monthly meetings to schools on an individual basis, which is at the best available time for the staff members there. At that meeting, it is myself, the building administrators, the social workers, community partners, the MTS as facilitators, school counselors, behavior interventionists, if they are available at that time. And the purpose of this meeting is to identify what's truly going on in each building at each school as it relates to behavioral mental health. We also provide supports for Tier III intervention. This also gives us an opportunity to do a checkpoint to make sure that our community partners are providing mental health services as outlined in their contracts. Since 2024, I have expanded the Behavior Health Initiative by implementing five new programs. Those programs are as follows. The Flex Prevention and Substance Abuse Program, which focuses on vaping, tobacco education. The second part of that program is also the Intervention Services, where students have the opportunity to receive individual and group therapy. And the third level of their services is treatment through our partnership with Sumter Behavioral Health Services. If we have a student who is in need of a higher level of care, they can receive intensive therapy and possibly inpatient services through our partnership with Sumter Behavioral Health. The next program that we have implemented is Strengthening Families. This program is a family approach, where families will be given the opportunity to work on core issues that's impacting the family unit, such as conflict management, also working on behaviors. Parents are getting information to better understand their students' behavior, mental health disorders. This program was a pilot program this year at Willow Drive Elementary. We had eight families to participate in this program, and we have heard great, great results from that program. We are now looking to take this program and spread it across our district. The next program is the Trauma-Informed Intervention for Students and Staff. This program focuses on a four-week, 45-day session for middle and high school to discuss topics that's leading our students to, for example, wanting to self-harm, or wanting to harm others. Students will have the opportunity to address topics in this group for dealing with past traumas, if they've been dealing with abandonment, rejection, social skills, boundaries. This program has been really, really great to help students in that area. And the second part of this program is for staff members, where staff members will be able, as far as teachers, will be able to go through this program and learn practical strategies for fostering a trauma-informed classroom. So the fourth program is the Resilient Parent Network. This program is still fairly new. We're still waiting on approval on this one. And this program is a peer support designed to support parents navigating the complexities of raising children with mental health challenges. So it would support and assist to reduce the stigma surrounding mental health and motivation to support their child's journey. The last of the five programs is the Classroom Management and De-escalation Program. This program helps teachers to understand how to build supportive, respectful, and structured classroom culture to reduce behavior issues, implement evidence-based de-escalation techniques, learn proactive strategies for setting clear expectations, and reinforcing positive behaviors. I've provided the board with data on all five of these programs so that you can see a breakdown of how many referrals we actually receive for the Flex Programs, Strengthening Families, Trauma-Informed, Resilient Parent Network, as I stated earlier, is a new program, and the Classroom Management De-escalation Program as well. We also have the data to show that this school year alone, we have received 374 referrals from our community partners. Flex Program, 225 referrals. The Strengthening Families, being that it started off as a pilot program, it was only eight families that participated. We are looking for those numbers to grow. The Trauma Intervention for Students and Staff, we had one school to participate in the Trauma-Informed Training for staff members and one school to participate for the students. And for the Classroom Management De-escalation Program, we had three schools to participate. So I do want to address managing suicide and homicidal audiations. In response to the challenges faced by Sumter School District, I've developed a comprehensive behavior risk management manual to provide clear guidelines on how to address a student who may be experiencing suicide or homicidal audiations. In addition, a training was followed by implementing this manual. All administrators, assistant principals, school psychologists, social workers, and school counselors attend this training. And we are looking to do, in updated training yearly, a refresher course. In addition, during this school term, all schools was provided a crisis management kit. It was my hopes that we never needed the kit because that meant that we didn't lose another student and we didn't lose a staff member. Unfortunately, we have had to use that kit. All schools have been provided this resource to their schools. So what happens is, when we lose a kid, we have grief support, loss of a student and staff. The district crisis team, which includes myself, Ms. Davis, the Executive Student Support Services, as well as other district staff who joined that school to partner with the school counselor to provide grief and emotional supports to students and staff. Unfortunately, Allen Stride Middle has experienced the highest number of loss in recent years. As a result, additional supports have been put in place to care for those students and staff. We also have support of Santee Waterbury Department of Mental Health, Mobile Crisis. Mobile Crisis Services provide immediate onsite mental health intervention and support for individuals experiencing a serious emotional or behavioral crisis. One of their primary functions is to evaluate the student for signs of psychosis or other serious mental health conditions. Some indicators may warrant mobile crisis evaluation includes auditory and visual hallucination, delusions, disorganized or incoherent thinking, severe agitation and intimate risks to harm self or others. We are grateful for having that community resource to help our students. As of July 2022, the district entered in a formal agreement with South Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to provide rehabilitative behavioral health services. Through that contract, we are able to, of course, partner with our community partners, but we're also able to also bring in additional supports for our schools. To build this foundation, I would like to ask that we are provided the opportunity to extend this program by bringing in school-based therapists directly through the district. Bringing in school-based therapists in addition to community partners will help us to reach more students. I will say our community partners are excellent. I know personally, I have asked them to go over and beyond to stretch out even more through our district to provide services. However, sometimes when community partners are not actually housed in the building on that day because they are assigned to students who are on their caseload only. That mean a school may go without having a mental health therapist in the building. Of course, they have the school counselor, but they don't have that mental health support. And when having that mental health support, it would definitely assist the school counselor, but it will provide onsite mental health education that can be given to parents, psychoeducation. It also can provide extra services that students may need right away. So I like to share the goals for Behavioral Health Services. It is our goal to have one school-based, at least one school-based therapist in each elementary and middle school, and at least two school-based therapists in our high schools. In addition to that goal, we would like to have a clinical day program. This year alone, we have nearly 76 students that have been placed on homebound instructions due to mental health challenges linked to truancy. The goal of homebound is to bridge the gap with providing resources to get kids back into schools. And having a clinical day program, it would help these students to bridge that gap in getting back into a full, general, regular-day school. So the way the clinical day program is set up, where students will have a mixture of therapeutic services as well as receiving their academic services throughout the day. This program can be abbreviated, where students can attend a half-day, and gradually as they're working on their mental health challenges, they can transition back into the school setting. So these are two goals that we, major goals, that we have for Behavioral Health Services. I can break down what the district needs, what we currently have, let's say. We definitely, we have that contract with South Carolina Department of Mental Health. We have access to resources now. We have seats, being that we have so many students that's out on homebound due to mental health. We do have the clinical supervision. We have the clinical director. I serve as the clinical director for the district. We have Medicaid manager. What we need for our clinical day program would be operational budget, staff, vacant building or wing of a school, materials and trainings. For school-based therapists, we have similar to the same as a clinical day program. We do have that contract where we can bill for reimbursement of services through Medicaid. We do have that contract. We have Medicaid manager and that supervision piece. With the clinicians, we would need competitive salaries and benefits, professional development and training, designated office space, within assigned schools and materials. Now, I know this may seem like we're asking for a lot. So one of the things that we are doing, and we have already started doing, is looking for external funding opportunities to assist with funding this project. But of course, we would still need the district's support to help with funding this project as well. I propose looking at schools first, who are in need of that additional support of a school-based therapist and start there and kind of work our way across the district. In addition to supports for students and families, we also have supports that's available for staff. Through MirrorHelp, and MirrorHelp is an online healthcare provider that offers free therapy services to state employees. This information has been shared throughout the district to our staff members. And I've been hearing some really... And I've been hearing some really good, really, really good reports. A lot of staff members are taking advantage of this service. Lastly, I'd like to leave you some information to review, and that brings me to the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Any questions at this time?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
So when I reached out this week to have this on the agenda, it was because of the issues that we were facing in our schools, and I felt like they weren't being addressed. And I see your goals that you have put out to us, present to us. And I'm pretty sure this is not the first time you put these goals out there to the district, but it's time to stop ignoring things like this.
I agree.
My question is, when can we get, like, put a proposal together and get started moving forward with these goals? Because I think because of the issues that we're facing through the district, I think we need to move ASAP on this. Not saying two years from now, not saying if we can, let's start next year, let's start making, you know... And we may can't get every school, but we can work ourselves until we end every schools. So, great presentation.
Thank you.
I'm definitely going to continue to reach out to the superintendent to see what help is he providing you to accomplish these goals. Because these are some great goals, and it can make a difference. And being that we're losing children, you know, suicidal, disciplinary issues, this right here can make a difference in our district. And thank you for putting this together. Outstanding. If anything that you need for support from school boarding, English, I'm here. Definitely reach out. But I'm going to be requesting updates on this process. In fact, I'm going to be requesting every two weeks because I want to know an update, where we at, because I don't want us just to sit on this information. Because I think that's a habit we have, instead of pushing forward to these goals. So know that if they're coming for you for updates, it's because I'm questioning what if we're doing to assist Ms. Keith in getting these goals done. Okay? I want us to, like, put this in place to move on now.
Okay. And so, Ms. English, we will share a copy of the proposal with Ms. Scott to share with the board regarding the detailed information regarding the goals and also the proposal for the clinical day program. We can send that to Ms. Scott to share with the board.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just for clarification, and I think Ms. Davis just alluded to it, so you all do have a proposal that shows a fiscal impact as well for the operational budget, staff, the vacant building or wing of a school as well?
Yes.
Okay. I do have another question. I know that you stated that the information for the staff is made available to the staff or it's been pushed out to staff. When it comes to our students, how is that information shared with the student or the families? I see that it was like 200 and something referrals. How are those referrals normally made? Are they made by an administrator in the building, a teacher, or can they be made by a parent as well?
They are made by the administrators in the building, the school counselors also make those referrals, social workers make those referrals too. I would like to, you know, ask that it's added on our website so parents can have easy access to it, but that's pretty much how referrals are made.
Okay. And I have one additional question, and I'm not sure if this is directly related or if it's just a correlation between the two. I know that we have for years been using the Sprigio platform to identify or to document bullying situations within our schools. Are we doing something with mental health to address the bullying issues in our schools and how that directly, how bullying impacts the mental health of our students? Considering that we've had students that have unfortunately taken their lives because of bullying incidents, we see a lot of it when it comes to the homicides as well, where it's just, I don't like that person. So what are we doing as a district? I understand that this is the supports that we have in place right now, but what does that actually look like in our schools?
Good question. What we have been pushing is for schools to make more referrals versus being reactive. We are encouraging schools to be more proactive. If you even look at the data that was provided, some of the referrals, some of the programs are really, really low as far as who's actually utilizing the programs that we have. So I am asking from, you know, from you, from the executive team to help with pushing these programs, as well as when I meet with schools on bi-monthly, bi-monthly at each school, I'm making sure that I'm asking the schools, the school counselors, you know, are you making those referrals? You know, what's going on? We even staff situations. If it's a situation with a student and it's like, okay, so which direction should we go? So that's also available to them as well. So I'm hoping just with increasing the programs that we do have and, you know, encouragement to make those referrals, that that would target the students who may be receiving, you know, may be bullied, and students unfortunately who are, who have made attempts or have taken their lives.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mental health, I hate to use the words drug and alcohol, but that may be the root cause of much of the mental health issues, particularly at the high school level. I mean, the teachers very often know if somebody's sitting on drugs, you can smell it. Is there anything that you're going to tie in drugs and alcohol with this program?
We have the FLEX program that addresses drugs and alcohol.
If you don't mind, I'll let them talk about it, please. Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry. We have the FLEX program that addresses vaping, drugs, and alcohol. One of the issues we are finding that students are not being referred to the FLEX program until they actually get to their turn of school, until they get to SASE. So what we're trying to encourage is that referrals are taken, are made for students before we even get to that part. The FLEX program is broken down into three sections. The first one is prevention. Schools have actually utilized that service to do, you can do it assembly, you can meet with a classroom full of kids, just to talk about on the prevention part of it. The second layer of it is the individual therapy as well as group therapy, and lastly, the treatment part. So the FLEX program is in place exclusively at some of the school districts to address those needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I, and I'm not sure, Dr. Wright, I brought a program to you and you met with them. Are we enforcing that bully program or are we giving them options? Because I think, last time I heard, we were giving the schools options and studying, but we really need to enforce it that they do it. But what are, I mean, as of now, what's the status of it, Dr. Wright?
We have a couple of places where we piloted the program, is the one I think where you're talking about, but we'll, with Ms. Keith's help, we will look to increase the effectiveness of it.
And we'll follow with operations regarding the bullying information.
Absolutely. And Ms. Keith, I would definitely, going to personally reach out with you because I won't, you know, being that you have this background, I mean, you're the coordinator and, you know, you seem to, in this PowerPoint, you seem to be very educated about what's going on in our district when it comes down to this. I'm going to definitely send you an email where you can actually meet with them too and see how you can coordinate it with these schools in getting this done. It's a short meeting and it's paid, grant-paid for, so it's not going to cost the district anything. But see if we can get it started, at least coming up next school term, we can start putting this into place. And it addresses bullying and, like Ms. Disney said, alcohol use and all that good stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
I just want to leave you something.
We have one more question as well. Go ahead.
As far as it relates to behavioral health services, are behavioral health services mandatory or mandate for our homebound students or any of our students where we know that it is an issue? Or are these services voluntary based on family participation? And the only reason why I'm singling out homebound is because of the, everything that goes into homebound, and the fact that the child is confined to home, someone is going into the home perhaps for that instruction.
Okay. I'll let Dr. Harriet, she's here, she can answer that question for you.
Thank you.
As we are currently restructuring that department, as the current Director of Student Success, and you guys have given us the pleasure of building that framework, that is something that we will look at. As we all know that we have a teacher shortage, we are struggling still with homebound instructors. Is it something that is mandated? Not at this point, but if that's something that we need to consider to offer another layer of support, that's something we're more than willing to do.
Thank you.
And also to add to that, as students transition out because of the mental health issues, that is something on our radar where the team does provide family with the resources to get the support they need. And before they transition back into the district, then we make sure that they have those resources in place as well. And apart as the medical team being heavily involved in the meetings. And we do meet with many medical teams during those meetings to help students transition back into the school.
Mr. Chair, I have one additional question.
All right. One more.
Ms. Davis, this may be a question for you. With the, under the program descriptions slide, there's several different programs that are currently implemented in some of the school district. How often does the administration evaluate the effectiveness of these programs? Because when I look at the Behavioral Health Services data report, it's very skewed as far as which ones we're seeing a larger number of referrals to. Are we looking on a quarterly basis, a yearly basis, to see which program is more effective or where we're, I mean, from the data, we can see that it's two programs that are receiving the bulk of the referrals, but how are we doing the evaluation of the effectiveness of the programs?
I meet with my key team members monthly, and then following the quarterly meeting, Ms. Keith will provide me with the update regarding the quarterly meetings. One thing I will say to her credit, after this first year of meeting with the principals, now they are eager and looking forward to the meetings moving forward because they see the big picture and in the impact. Sometimes when you're in the principal position, you feel overwhelmed and may not realize the help is there, but once she shared with them her role and how she can help her team, then they really began to focus on how they can use those programs to better serve their students and family. And so by the second meeting, she started to see more engagement, and certainly at this last meeting, we already have plans where schools have already invited her and her team members to be at their first faculty meeting for the 25, 26 school year, especially with supporting the adults. There are many times, so many times, we focus on students, but we also found out through the process of engaging in conversations that our adults are vulnerable to, and so that's why we've had to provide a layer of supports to adults in our building as well. And that's why we have those additional programs that focus on our adult needs.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I just got, I want, Ms. Keith, could you give your feedback? What are you getting back when you're dealing with the principals and just the...
Exactly the same question Ryan asked, but what are you getting back? Because you're actually in there. What are feedback that you're getting back from them? Are you getting any pushback? Are you getting, they're welcoming you in, saying this is a good plan, or what are you getting back?
The majority of the schools are welcoming and wanting this meeting. I do get a couple of pushbacks from just a couple of schools, but we are trying to work through those kinks, and we're hoping to get through those kinks with those schools. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Keith and Ms. Davis. Very important topic, and certainly we appreciate your presentation tonight. All right, Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're ready for item 5.4, Code of Conduct, which will be presented by Mr. Samuel Myers and Dr. Kelvin Williams.
Well, good evening. Our Code of Conduct has been used throughout this school year, and we're looking forward to continuing on. We wanted to bring some updates to you. One of our slides indicated about our meetings and our input sessions. We've had sessions with teachers, there have been parents who've participated, we had administrators who've served on the various committees that we've had, even teach advisory councils. So we're definitely on point with what we're attempting to do and looking at the various changes that we've made. We've got some new definitions, some new categories. I'm going to ask Dr. Williams to come forward and share some of that information with you at this time.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Myers alluded to, this is an ongoing document, and as new codes come out, new trends, we try to update it to make sure that we reflect on some of the latest things going on. So a lot of the slides, I'm not going to read through specifically, but just want you to understand when you see the strikeouts, strikeouts are indication that's old language that we're removing. Red indicate new language that we're proposing or have proposed. And with like bus violation as an example, we had the bus policy. Currently, we don't have a bus policy as it relates to discipline itself because of the Code of Conduct in place at the school, school-related activities, and on the school bus. So we just may set a saying, "Policy." We want to talk about the bus expectations because we do require students, all the students that ride bus when we review the Code of Conduct, to go over the expectations on the In looking at the attendance, we updated the definition for cutting activity. There's like three codes that address cutting, and this one just is non-instructional related stuff, so we wanted to spell that out, separate that from cutting class, because we consider the cutting class as instructional activity. So the cutting activity, cutting class is instructional, and cutting activity is non-instructional stuff, so we added a new definition to reflect that. Another new code that we added, and keep in mind, all behavior codes that's utilized in South Carolina come directly from State Department of Education, so this is one that was on the books that we didn't have in our policy, but we wanted to be able to document those situations where students have non-prescription medication that they're using. So we came up with the code to document that, and if the behavior continues, parents and students will know how it would actually be addressed. And one of the key things we added was in that first, during that first violation, there's a warning and a referral to the nurse, and that referral to the nurse, the nurse will speak with that student and the parent about, student or parent about what is the process when you have a child that needs to take those medications, that non-prescription. Stealing, stealing was a code. We had larceny theft on our books, but the State Department has taken over a lot of the codes, and the larceny theft, they actually align that with the criminal codes or criminal definition, but they added stealing this year for us to be able to use to capture the non-criminal, for lack of a better word, the non-criminal stealing episodes that may happen in the school building. So we have our over $50 and under $50. So if you look at the code, we took out larceny theft, and we just add the word stealing, and we moved larceny theft to a category three, which is the criminal section of the Unauthorized device was already on the books, but we were using it for, we had unauthorized electronic device, we were using it for cell phones. The state did provide an actual cell phone code, so we gave unauthorized a definition that reflect those devices, or those things that's not, that doesn't fall under the cell phone definition. A cell phone definition covers things that transmit signals, so on and so forth. So we added, we utilize unauthorized device to capture the non-cell phone items that a student may bring to school. Harassment was already on the books, we just updated harassment, harassment, intimidation, bullying, all have the same code. That code, that definition comes from the State Department. We just added it to our Code of Conduct to reflect what the State Department already had in place. Code of Conduct to reflect what the State Department already had in place. And I spoke of the cellphone violation, phone violation code, and we basically just pulled the same language that we have been advertising on our webpage, how you define cell phones, where the cellphone's supposed to be, and what time are you not supposed to have them on campus, because it's a restriction process. I already spoke of the stealing. All right, threats towards students. We added some language, and we kinda, legislators are putting together some language for threat, and we kinda got, wanted to get ahead of the code. They're actually putting a new law out there, so we kinda borrowed some of the language that they're proposing. It's not a law yet, but it's a proposed law at this time. We borrowed some of that language to put in for our threat, threat towards a student. And we're gonna utilize that as the foundation at this point, because there's a lot of threats coming in, and we wanted to make sure we had a clear system of recognizing it and how to deal with it. We are, we did put it in the category two, because we're in the business with kids. And of course, if you read the definition, "A statement, message, or communication, whether spoken, written, or sent electronically, in which the student expressed an intention to harm another student. This can occur in person, in writing, or online. A threat is considered serious even if the student did not intend to carry it out, especially if it caused fear, disruption, or concern within the school environment." So that's a pretty extensive definition, there's a lot of moving parts to it. Of course, when that happens, there's already a process in place with a threat screener, and depending on the outcome of that threat screener, we take a little further with a threat assessment to determine the process. We say category two, and as you notice, we, we outlined in the policy that a threat screener is required. We didn't mention the threat assessment, but the screener will dictate whether you move forward with the full assessment or not. For sex offense, of course, there's a lot of, we just added in several of our behavior codes, the Title IX requirement, and law enforcement involvement if required. Larceny theft, I've already spoke on that, when I said we moved that to category three, because that has a criminal definition. Sexting was a new code that the State Department put out to address those activities that happen with the cellphone, the pictures and things of that nature. We had a process of capturing it on the pornography, but this code gives us a more clear, a clearer way of, of looking at it. And of course, the definition also came from the State Department, so that's, we're following that definition, or we have to follow that definition. And it is a category three offense. Sexual extortion, Gavin's Law, is another one that the State Department came out with, and that just deals with threatening to use private images and things of that nature in return for favors or consideration or coercion. So we added that to category three, and that's also a State Department definition. Sexual harassment, we add the Title IX requirement. At this point, are there any questions for, in reference to the Code of Conduct updates?
All right. Any questions at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do have a question, but when it comes to the changes in the Code of Conduct, outside of the student handbook or on our website, how is this information disseminated to our staff, our students, and our community to make them aware of these changes?
Up until last year, we was required to do an annual review. This school year, we started doing every semester, the staff and students review the information. There's a documentation that go home to the parents to make them aware that the code is out there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Because of the length of this presentation, and I'm pretty sure there may be some other questions that come from review of this presentation, I would like to make a referral to this board that the Policy Committee will meet to discuss the Code of Conduct updates before the beginning of the 25-26 school year.
Okay. All right. Any other questions at this time? Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If you, if, if grant the motion for it to go to the Policy Committee, when would the Policy Committee meet on this? Cause I think probably wouldn't want it to languish.
The Policy Committee would meet whatever is conducive for the administration and the members of that committee to meet, but we will definitely get that date out to the public, once we are able to solidify a date.
Okay. Cause I, I still have some motions pending in that committee that I'd like to take up as well.
Okay. Any further, yes?
Hi. Just to address your question of how it is communicated, so every student actually receives a printed copy at the beginning of the year, elementary, middle, and high, that is sent home with every single student. We have it on our website, we do a robo-call to let the parents know how to access it, that every single child will receive it. Like Dr. Williams said as well, there's an annual review two times a year with all the students to go through it. And I know the item's done a good job of reporting any changes that we've had with it as well. So we've tried to get it out through every single communication channel that we do have, but we're certainly giving suggestions if you have others.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
Just wanted to add that in reference to the Policy Committee meeting that you will schedule, we have a time that we will be meeting with the principals and letting them see this as well, but we have to have all of this printed before the first day of school, so I'm not sure when the Policy Committee will meet.
When is your meeting with the principals?
The week of June 3rd and 4th.
So we would need to schedule, I would like to have that meeting scheduled after your meeting so that you can bring that feedback to the committee as well for discussion, so we can look at the week, that following week for committee meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. You all mentioned intervention plan. Is that, is that intervention, intervention plan, one that is in elementary, middle, and high school?
Yes.
It, it's in, it's in all levels?
Yes.
And the plan itself, is that pushed down or created by district level, or is that planned done by individual schools, their intervention plan?
The district provides the template.
The template.
Each individual school provides, build a plan based on the individual student, his or her needs.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further questions? Any further question? Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Williams, Mr. Myers, for your presentation. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that almost concludes the superintendent's report. I just wanted to update everybody, a couple of you asked me how many students were recognized during the initial, the number is 211. So there were 211 students recognized for perfect scores in Sumter School District. Not all of them were present tonight, most of them were, but it's 211. And at that point, that concludes the superintendent's report for May 19th, 2025.
All right. Certainly, we thank you for your superintendent report, and we thank you for the administrative staff who gave the presentations. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's, we're now down to item number six, executive session. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for discussion of individual student matters, transfers in and out of district, and the monthly personnel report, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and/or release of an employee, and contractual matters.
We have a second?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to enter into executive session for, for individual student matters, transfers in and out of the district, and the monthly personnel report of appointments, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and/or release of an employee, and contractual matters. Any discussion? Hearing none, you may vote. Vote passes at this time, ladies and gentlemen of the community. Thank you all for tuning in and joining us tonight. We're now entering to executive session at this time. Thank you.[1257.51]
Thank you.
We're now ready to return to open session at this time upon consensus. We're now back in open session. Item number eight, action items eight point one, any motions?
I move to allow student A to attend school outside of Sumter School District for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to allow student A to attend school outside of Sumter School District for the 25-26 school year. Any discussion? Hearing none, you may vote your pleasure. Vote passes unanimously. Eight point two. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the personnel report from Monday, May nineteenth, 2025 as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to approve the personnel, monthly personnel report as of May nineteenth, 2025 as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, you may vote your pleasure at this time. Vote passes unanimously. Eight point two.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the personnel report for Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, as presented.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the personnel, monthly personnel report as of May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, you may vote your pleasure. Vote passes unanimously. Point three.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve the spring twenty twenty five capital bond proceeds as presented on Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty five.
Second. It's been a motion and a second to approve the spring twenty twenty five capital bonds proceed. Any discussion? Hearing none, you may vote your pleasure. Vote passes at this time. Eight point four.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the Crestwood Athletic Field Priority List as presented on Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty five.
I second. It's been a motion and a second to approve the Crestwood Athletic Field Priority List as of May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Any discussion?
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I'm going to vote against that because I believe we should pause the project and make sure that we have complied with the state requirements according to the Department of Education. And I don't think that we've done that, but I can't be sure because the presentations did not let us know whether we did that.
All right. Yes. Each of your votes will be shown in the record. Any further discussion? Hearing none, you may vote your pleasure at this time. Vote passes. Eight point five.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the district's support of fourteen thousand dollars to Crosswell Drive Elementary School for their mobile learning RV.
Second. It's been a motion and a second to approve the district's support of the fourteen thousand towards Crestwood, excuse me, Crosswell Drive Elementary School for the purpose of their mobile learning RV. Any discussion? Hearing none, you may vote your pleasure. Vote is unanimous and it passes. Eight point six.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the realignment timeline for the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven school year.
I second. It's been a motion and a second to approve the realignment timeline for twenty six, twenty seven school year.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to adjourn. I would point to question for the range.
Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I want to proudly ask that we reconsider going forward with this realignment plan. Number one, the plan is obsolete. Some schools are no longer in the district and suddenly things have changed dramatically since the plan was first devised. The plan is impractical at this point. It does not in any way reflect the trend. Our trend, our district is in decline in student population. It is not trending upward and there are many factors contributing to that. The birth rate is down. Population in Sumter County is stagnant and competition is keen. Homeschooling is up. Private schooling is healthy. Charter schools are increasing and expanding. The existing one will be accepting larger students population this fall. A new charter school will come about the same time of this alignment and now there is conversation about even another charter school coming. So the plan is really impractical at this point. It is also pretentious. It proposes to do what it cannot do. There cannot and perhaps will not ever be a perfect alignment because the middle of streets and roadways are an essential demarcation and it always will be. So neighbors will end up in different districts. And the plan is extravagant. It's extravagant. We have schools costing over twenty thousand dollars a year per student to operate and others nearly ten thousand dollars less. We aren't looking at that. We aren't looking at the fact that half of the seats in our schools are empty. Our schools are currently designed for a population of about twenty six thousand. We have thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand, six hundred fifty four to be exact. In the last four years, twenty, 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 twenty one school year to twenty twenty four, our population has dropped nearly by two thousand students. We, we're a hundred and eighty one students away from two thousand. The exact number is one thousand, eight hundred and nineteen. In twenty twenty one, we had fifteen thousand, four hundred seventy three students four years ago. Now we have thirteen thousand, six hundred fifty four. In those four years, we've only had five schools to increase in enrollment. High Hills leads sixteen. Hillcrest follows with nine. Raspin Creek with four. R E Davis with two. Manchester with one for a total of thirty two in that four year period. When we look at this last year alone, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, we had fourteen thousand, ninety four students. Now twenty twenty four, twenty five, we have thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty four students. We're down by four hundred and forty students this school year alone. We have just a few schools that increased in population over this last year. Oakland Primary went from five hundred, now has twenty nine additional students. Went from five oh seven to five thirty six. R E Davis went from three eighty four to four hundred, that's sixteen more students. Cherryvale went from four seventy three to four seventy nine, six students. Alice Drive Middle went from seven hundred and seventy one to seven eighty, seven students. And Crosswell from four and sixty one students to sixty two students, growth by one student. The master plan should be the engine that drives realignment, not eliminate realignment. Any alignment at this juncture will do one or two things. One, it will immortalize this district with our kid and obsolete schools, most of which are beyond serviceable vitality. And two, it will derail the master plan, no matter what you say, which if allowed to go forward, will guide and govern growth and provide for a plan for multi-tiered schedules to replace our aging schools in the next few years and across the next several years. We owe it to our children to put their education, their future above politics, geography and our personal views. It matters not. Matters not. Now I can't read my own writing. It matters not who the superintendent may be. Delapidated, out of date schools will never foster a designation district. And we owe it to this community, this county, to be a major component in the one Sumter team approach to progress and development. And we should be a part of the movement to make Sumter a designation city and county. We have the authority to align. But I ask you, do we really want to alienate? This vote will either open the channels for expansion and development of a bright, hopeful future, or it will lead us into isolation and polarization. A system of schools desperate for repairs, renovations and replacements. In the spirit of moving forward and not backward, Mr. Chairman, I wish to offer a substitute motion that this plan be continued until such time as the master plan is developed and approved by this board.
All right, it's been a motion to...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to be heard on the matter.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I can't match Dr. Kenny's eloquence, but I can add things I think that matter. We were told this plan would help and was selected because it would help us with our bus problems, but there's no plan associated with this plan. There's no demonstration that this will help with a bus problem. And I don't think it will. I also know that we don't know what it will cost to implement this plan and I think it's one of the motions that I wanted to bring before the whole body and that is that we have an economic impact statement when we make big changes like this. Dr. Kenny said that the growth in the county is stagnant. That is correct, but it's caused the city is growing very fast and the county, the rural areas are shrinking at the same rate. So the total comes out to be almost a net zero. I consulted the realtors in town. There's going to be between a thousand and fifteen hundred new rooftops have already been planned and some of them even laid out in the area between Dalzell and five twenty one into Sumter. And this plan doesn't take that into account. As Dr. Kenny said, there's three charter schools that are going to come online. One's an adult. It doesn't, doesn't impact us within the next three years. And even without that, our projected student count for next year, according to documentation that I've seen, is supposed to be somewhere around twelve thousand, twelve thousand three. So this plan can't be reflective of the best thing to do there because the changes have not been documented where people left and where they went. I just believe that it's, we should put our emphasis on the master plan, including strategically renovating or building new schools instead of this because I don't see anything that this offers except making the schools equally empty when we know the ones that are empty because there's no one near them and we're going to artificially move those folks. I don't know if reducing the student population at Sumter High will benefit Lakewood-Crestwood, but I don't know if it'll change their standing in, in sports. I'm not sure. I have no way to know that. I just think that the idea that, we brought it up at the first board meeting I was at and... in March, talked about it for nineteen minutes, and I know some people are a little tired that we talked about it for more than that now, but I just don't think it's, it's advised right now. I think that we need to construct a master plan based on where we hope we'll go. This has nothing to say about where we hope we'll go. It only says where we believe we can send people to equalize the use of the schools, which is not a standard that I think many educational institutions use, equalizing the use of the school. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes. What I would like to say about realignment, I think it's very important right now for us to push this issue, being that it is definitely going to help with our rural, rural area schools. I think it's time for us to take a stand when it comes down to this. We have issues with bus transportation. This is, that realignment is going to help. You shouldn't have five buses in one area. And we definitely, Mr. Danson spoke to us about the issue, and I think with realignment, it's going to make a difference in our district. So I stand, I'm for realignment.
All right. We, I'm not sure, Ms. Scott, is, has it already cast the vote at this time? It's waiting on us? Okay, so I thought that's what it was. So there's been a, the motion and there's been a second and discussion, so at this time you may vote. The motion is to approve realignment timeline for the 26-27.
Mr. Chairman, what happened to the motion, the substitute motion?
Well, we're going to do that one next.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Why would we do a substitute motion after we did the original motion? Are you saying we, the substitute motion is to undo the original motion? State the substitute motion, please.
Dr. Kenny, can you state your substitute motion, please?
The substitute motion is that the alignment plan be continued until such time as the master plan is developed and adopted by this board.
Okay, Ms. Scott, we'll vote on that one first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got that one? Repeat it again.
The motion is that the realignment plan be tabled, let me use that term, be tabled until such time as the master plan is developed and approved by this board. Well, it's the same thing. Well, well, the motion says when it comes back. The motion says it comes back with the adoption of the master plan. That's, that's why, that's why I used it. Okay, well, let's, 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 let's leave the terminology as I was trying to make it simple for everyone. Let's leave the terminology at be continued until such time as the master plan is developed and approved by the board. And that really sets the timeline for it to come back. I apologize for any confusion about the language.
Second.
We're waiting on the motion to pop up on the, on the screen, Ms. Scott. Uh-uh, it didn't came up yet. No. All right. We're going to do the substitute motion at this time, and that motion is to, says the motion to table, yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The term, the term table should not be in the motion.
So you want to strike table out, and what word would you like to use?
The, the motion should state... The, the motion is that the realignment plan be continued until the master plan is developed and adopted by this board.
Okay. It's been a motion, a substitute motion, that the realignment plan be continued until such a time that the master plan is developed and approved by the board. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. You may vote your pleasure.
It's not up on ours, Mr. Chairman.
It's not, it's not up, it's not up.
Yeah, but that's all right.
Okay. I still don't see it, yes. Oh, I don't see it.
Okay, there it goes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, my answer, this is it?
Vote fails. We're going to do the original motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
We're going to move to the original motion at this time.
Point of order.
We're going to move to the original motion at this time. Do we have a motion for realignment for 26-27?
Point of order, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the realignment timeline for the 2026-2027 school year.
Second. It's been a motion and a second to approve the realignment timeline for 26-27.
Mr. Chairman.
School year. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, my point of order is that it's out of order for the chair to vote because he has a conflict because he will have a charter school in operation.
Sir, sir, do not start that in here tonight. That is not true. Well, we know that's not true. Do not start that. Point of order, no, stop it. Do not.
Mr. Levin, you're out of order because we're having a discussion about realignment. The realignment timeline is the...
You've been trying to discuss this matter all night. This is a public school board meeting. If you want to talk about that, you go to a process.
Out of order, I ruled it out of order.
I don't want to hear that. You're out of order, sir. You're out of order, sir.
Ms. English?
Well, I'm making the call tonight. It's out of order.
At this time, it's been a motion and a second. You may vote your pleasure at this time.
Did you say that my motion was out of order?
Yes, it's out of order. I said...
No, I don't want to hear what you have to say.
Well, I said it's out of order.
That doesn't matter, Mr. Chairman. What did you say?
Out of order.
I ruled you out of order. Thank you.
Thank you.
You may vote your pleasure at this time. Vote passes at this time. We're now down to the consent agenda, nine point one, approval of the consent agenda. It stands approved without any objections at this time. Hearing none, the consent agenda is now approved. Item number ten, closing of the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight. Certainly has been a meeting. And we also want to say how proud again that we are of all of the students that came out tonight to be recognized. Thank you, Dr. Ryan and your administrative team and board members, thank you as well. You all have a good night. Meeting adjourned.